Estim.
Estim.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
It says that you are here because that's something that I need to unmute.
You want to tell me?
Okay. I can say unmute.
Okay. So.
Testing, testing.
Okay.
First thing we're going to do is open with a word of prayer. So if Pastor Mark could come forward, we'll get started.
Let us bar heads. Our Father in Heaven, Maker of all things, this earth, this nation, this state, in this county are yours. By your grace and goodness, we live here. You bless us here, but they are not ours, they're yours. May we be good stewards of the time and talent and treasure that you give us here in Ottawa County. And we use the time that you give us in ways that honor you. May we make good use of the talents that you have gifted in the people of this county. You have provided us with much material wealth in this land. May we be good stewards of your resources. Lord, would you be present in this place and would you lead us? Remove what it is, what does not belong here, restrain what is not honoring to you. Bless the decisions that are made here. May all that is said and done be done according to your wisdom. All for your glory alone, we pray only in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you. All right, if you could please rise for the Ledge of Allegiance.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Ms. Cosby.
Here.
Mrs. Ebel.
Here.
Mr. Ziostra.
Here.
Mr. Bonema.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Turpstra.
Here.
Mrs. Curran.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodey.
Here.
Mr. Bellnap.
Here.
Mr. Bergman.
Here.
And Mrs. Meadama.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
All right, wonderful. Seeing as we have no correspondence tonight, we're going to move to public comment. Again, this is an opportunity to welcome the public to speak for three minutes. Please address your comments to the chair and Mr. Clerk, do we have a list?
We do. We currently have sixty-four individuals on the list. First public comment, Michael Karas, Spring Lake Township.
Commissioner Moss. I am Michael Karas. I'm a resident, Spring Lake Village. My subject is human sacrifice. Let me repeat that, human sacrifice. Let it sink in. Many of your opponents are condemning, even moating, and yes, even celebrating human sacrifice. Now, they don't call it that, not yet anyway. No, they are calling it reproductive healthcare and other such euphemisms. Yes, I am talking about abortion. I'm talking about the ninety-nine point nine percent of abortions that are essentially cosmetic in nature. I am not talking about the one-tenth of one percent of abortions in which the life of the mother and the life of an unborn child both hang in the balance and a choice must be made. I am talking about all of the other millions of abortions annually performed in our country today, many of them to residents of our very own county, or should I say to potential residents of our county. They have been snuffed out, killed solely for the momentary advantage of others who claim to be caring, loving human beings. There is an enormous difference between a fingernail and a fetus, and only the most transient of similarities. But it is those similarities that your enemies have focused on to promote and even celebrate abortion, which is another euphemism for human sacrifice. Many of you take great pride in passing a resolution aimed at protecting childhood innocence. But I say you have been timid, smugly pleased with a half measure. There are those in our county's health department who condone and even promote abortions, all in the name of convenience and the momentary self-interests of others. There are even a couple on this board who sympathize with and even are trying to protect such people. So before you congratulate yourself with passing next year's budget, ask yourself this. How much of that money is going to go to promoting and even celebrating human sacrifice? Let freedom ring for all, even the unborn in Ottawa County.
Thank you.
Number two is Janine Chittenden, Chittenden, Grand Haven Township.
Good evening. I'm Janine Chittenden. I live in Grand Haven Township. I've been a public health nurse in Ottawa County for over four decades. It's given me a chance to recognize the needs of families. As a staff nurse, I worked in all programs except for two in Ottawa County Health Department. Over the years, I was elevated to supervisor and I got to a chance to see how programs work and funding and formulas and worrying about if I had enough ink pens for staff. So it also allowed me to see from a personal place what families' needs are in our community. I recall your campaign, many of you on the board, who focused your campaign signs on faith, family, and freedom. My biggest concern right now with the department, health department budget, is the defunding of the nutrition program. Going back to your slogan, let's talk about faith. What would Jesus have done? He told us to feed the poor. Let's talk about your faith. Jesus would support your feeding the poor. And family, who better to feed? We have young families, middle-aged families, elderly, who don't have enough money and food is an issue for them. Our county does not have a cash flow problem. Freedom? Let's free up some of the money that families have by giving them some foods to help. Perhaps the elderly would have now money enough to pay their utilities. Perhaps the middle-aged family would have enough money to put a little gas in their car. Perhaps the youngest family could buy medication for their sick children. So I ask you, be heroes, not zeros. Be compassionate, not vengeful. Show that you've heard, you've listened, and that you have moved from where you stood nine months ago. Honor your faith. Share Ottawa County's abundance with the poorest of our people. Show Jesus's love by helping family and children, knowing Jesus would encourage you to help the least of us. Please fully fund the health department.
Thank you.
Number three is Dr. Luther Lowry, Allen Township.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm at two fifty-seven, let's get this baby going. And it's actually the Reverend Dr. Ruth Lowry because I can't fix anybody's appendices, but I've been a hospice chaplain and I know how to take care of grief. And at the risk of stating the obvious, this county isn't a lot of grief. We've been in Washington Post, y'all, because of the actions of this body. And it hasn't been for good reasons. So when we look at wanting to have a community that honors business and makes it so that everybody can live in a way that honors each other, right? We all use the same roads, same grocery stores, same dry cleaners. But we are not honoring each other. And what this body has done and is proposing to do with the Department of Public Health is obscene. No one respectfully, by God's grace, no one here may say you are pro-life if you do not insist on protecting all life. Now, I've gone from sounding like a nice calm
Please come up one at a time as your name is called later, that would be great too. First thing we're gonna do is open with a word of prayer. So if Pastor Mark could come forward, we'll get started.
Let us bar heads. Our Father in Heaven, Maker of all things, this earth, this nation, this state, and this county are yours. By your grace and goodness, we live here. You bless us here, but they are not ours, they're yours. May we be good stewards of the time and talent and treasure that you give us here in Ottawa County. And we use the time that you give us in ways that honor you. May we make good use of the talents that you have gifted in the people of this county. You have provided us with much material wealth in this land. May we be good stewards of your resources. Lord, would you be present in this place and would you lead us? Remove what does not belong here, restrain what is not honoring to you. Bless the decisions that are made here. May all that is said and done be done according to your wisdom. All for your glory alone, we pray only in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. All right, if you could please rise for the Ledge of Allegiance. All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Ms. Cosby.
Here.
Mrs. Ebel.
Here.
Mr. Ziostra.
Here.
Mr. Bonema.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Turpstra.
Here.
Mrs. Curran.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodey.
Here.
Mr. Bellnap.
Here.
Mr. Bergman.
Here.
And Mrs. Midama.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
All right, wonderful. Seeing as we have no correspondence tonight, we're gonna move to public comment. Again, this is an opportunity to welcome the public to speak for three minutes. Please address your comments to the chair and Mr. Clerk, do we have a list?
We do. We currently have sixty-four individuals on the list. First public comment, Michael Karas, Spring Lake Township.
Commissioner Moss, I am Michael Karas. I'm a resident, Spring Lake Village. My subject is human sacrifice. Let me repeat that, human sacrifice. Let it sink in. Many of your opponents are condemning, even modding, and yes, even celebrating human sacrifice. Now, they don't call it that, not yet anyway. No, they are calling it reproductive healthcare and other such euphemisms. Yes, I am talking about abortion. I am talking about the ninety-nine point nine percent of abortions that are essentially cosmetic in nature. I am not talking about the one-tenth of one percent of abortions in which the life of the mother and the life of an unborn child both hang in the balance, and a choice must be made. I am talking about all of the other millions of abortions annually performed in our country today, many of them to residents of our very own county, or should I say, to potential residents of our county. They have been snuffed out, killed, solely for the momentary advantage of others who claim to be caring, loving, human beings. There is an enormous difference between a fingernail and a fetus, and only the most transient of similarities. But it is those similarities that your enemies have focused on to promote and even celebrate abortion, which is another euphemism for human sacrifice. Many of you take great pride in passing a resolution aimed at protecting childhood innocence. But I say you have been timid, smugly pleased with a half-measure. There are those in our county's health department who condone and even promote abortions, all in the name of convenience and the momentary self-interests of others. There are even a couple on this board who sympathize with and even are trying to protect such people. So before you congratulate yourself with passing next year's budget, ask yourself this: How much of that money is going to go to promoting and even celebrating human sacrifice? Let freedom ring for all, even the unborn in Ottawa County.
Thank you.
Number two is Janine Chittenden, Grand Haven Township.
Good evening. I'm Janine Chittenden. I live in Grand Haven Township. I've been a public health nurse in Ottawa County for over four decades. It's given me a chance to recognize the needs of families. As a staff nurse, I worked in all programs except for two in Ottawa County Health Department. Over the years, I was elevated to supervisor, and I got a chance to see how programs work and funding and formulas, and worrying about if I had enough ink pens for staff. So it also allowed me to see, from a personal place, what families' needs are in our community. I recall your campaign, many of you on the board, who focused your campaign signs on faith, family, and freedom. My biggest concern right now with the department, Health Department budget, is the defunding of the nutrition program. Going back to your slogan, let's talk about faith. What would Jesus have done? He told us to feed the poor. Let's talk about your faith. Jesus would support your feeding the poor. And family, who better to feed? We have young families, middle-aged families, elderly, who don't have enough money, and food is an issue for them. Our county does not have a cash flow problem. Freedom? Let's free up some of the money that families have by giving them some foods to help. Perhaps the elderly would have now money enough to pay their utilities. Perhaps the middle-aged family would have enough money to put a little gas in their car. Perhaps the youngest family could buy medication for their sick children. So I ask you, be heroes, not zeros. Be compassionate, not vengeful. Show that you've heard, you've listened, and that you have moved from where you stood nine months ago. Honor your faith. Share Ottawa County's abundance with the poorest of our people. Show Jesus's love by helping family and children. Knowing Jesus would encourage you to help the least of us. Please fully fund the Health Department.
Thank you.
Number three is Dr. Ruth Lowry, Holland Township.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm at two fifty-seven. Let's get this baby going. And it's actually the Reverend Dr. Ruth Lowry because I can't fix anybody's appendices, but I've been a hospice chaplain and I know how to take care of grief. And at the risk of stating the obvious, this county isn't a lot of grief. We've been in Washington Post, y'all, because of the actions of this body. And it hasn't been for good reasons. So when we look at wanting to have a community that honors business and makes it so that everybody can live in a way that honors each other, right? We all use the same roads, same grocery stores, same dry cleaners. But we are not honoring each other. And what this body has done and is proposing to do with the Department of Public Health is obscene. No one respectfully, by God's grace, no one here may say you are pro-life if you do not insist on protecting all life. Now, I've gone from sounding like a nice calm pastor to a fierce mama bear. I'm livid. My child is immunocompromised. He spent more than a month at University of Michigan Hospital a couple of years ago. When he had RSV as an adult, he was there for an entire week. I wear this not because I'm making a political statement, it's because I don't want to hug and kiss my baby while risking making him sick. And you know what? The only way we can protect everybody's children, including the unborn, y'all, you need to take care of public health. So really, so in all of the little campaign things that you have, I did little highlights. So from your pages, we've got government accountability. I'm asking you to be accountable. Parental rights. I'm a parent, y'all. My rights count too, for pity blooming sake. You want, and you want folks to live their lives in peace? If my child dies, there will be no peace. In fact, in the Old Testament in Jeremiah, it says, "Peace, peace," when there is no peace. There is no peace in this county. Personal relationship with Jesus Christ is a driving force in her life. Yep, same here. But guess what? We need to live in a place where we can live differently, believe differently, and still like each other and say, "Good morning! It's raining, it's snowing! Why do we live in Michigan?" Oh, I'm so glad we live in Michigan. Elected officials should represent us as servant leaders. That is what I'm asking you to do. Make decisions for yourself and your family. That is what I'm asking you to do. Life is sacred beginning to end, including my child. That is what I'm asking you to honor. My child belongs to me, let's see it. I really hope for those of you who are putting Jesus... Thanks.
Thank you.
Number four is Dwight Chittenden, Grand Haven Township.
Good evening, Dwight Chittenden, Grand Haven Township. Who will gain from your gross mismanagement of our tax dollars? January three, you hired Gibbs to replace Administrator John Shea. Three months later, Gibbs states that he's incapable of doing the job because the county's grown so much and there's so much going on. Hire me an executive. But when it came to the Health Department's budget, he thinks we can roll back to 2009. I don't understand that, how it's growing, but we can step back. Why didn't he use the 2008 budget? Where the budget was eleven point seven mil and expenditures was six point two mil for the general fund contributions. He liked using the pandemic budgets, not the pandemic, but the recession budgets. Would Gibson Common like to go back to 2009 wages and rates? I don't think so. Speaking of Commons, legal fees are up about thirty percent over last year. When the press asked Jack Jordan about the rates would go up next year, he smiled and said, "Yes." Nice at Ottawa County, he says, "They're cash cow." Please fund the Health Department. We need the Health Department. Everybody in the county needs the Health Department. We don't need to spend money on assistance, directors, and what have you. The people need the money, not people on the board for assistance, so just fund the Health Department very much, please.
Thank you.
Number five is Norma Kilila, Holland City.
Good evening, Commissioner Moss and Board of Commission members. My name is Norma Kilila. I'm a member of District Three in Ottawa County. And I have come to say, I am here simply because I have been appalled by the actions that this board has taken since January of this year, where ideological concerns seem definitely distinctly to be prioritized over the well-being of the county. Ottawa County has been my county of birth, and I believe in the values that I have seen here in my eighty-four years. I think that will turn things around. But I have been sad to see the losses that we have already incurred, and I wish you would consider those things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number six is Lois Mossen, Blendon Township.
I'm Lois Mossen. I live in Blendon Township, and you, Mr. Moss, are my commissioner. I urge you to vote no on the budget as proposed. My community earlier this month saw the suicide of a fourteen-year-old middle school student. It was hard to hear the news. It was even harder to hear that he had been taunted and bullied incessantly until he could take no more. That's made me think about what kind of example this commission is setting for young people in our community. Is this a place where if you're part of the in-crowd, you get to steamroller over anyone who's not? Where being part of the club is more important than professional competence? Where it's cool to smirk at and belittle people who are not like you? Where revenge and retribution are routine? Where there is not the slightest impulse toward empathy? This community needs public health services, including nutrition, family planning, disease prevention, vaccines, mental health services, and more. It needs to rely on qualified professionals and sound collaborative processes, not whims, grudges, and ideology. I implore you, restore reason, restore compassion, reject this budget.
Thank you.
Number seven is Katie Cole, Spring Lake.
Hello, my name is Katie Cole. I live in Spring Lake in Ottawa County. I've had a lot of conversations with gun owners, and without exception, they say, "Guns don't kill people. People do." It's a mental health issue. And they're not wrong. It is. You have declared Ottawa County to be a Second Amendment county, condoning and encouraging gun ownership. Not only are there more guns than people, there is a near epidemic level of mental health problems. Cutting the Health Department budget means denying mental health services to the very people who feel that guns are the only way out of their problems. I am here to demand that you begin to act as people elected to care for all of the citizens of Ottawa County and fully fund the Ottawa County Public Health Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number eight is Marla Walters, Holland Township.
Hello, Marla Walters, Holland Township. If you vote to approve the reduced Health Department budget tonight, you should acknowledge the impact of your decision. Voting yes means that you are okay with the Ottawa food program being cut in half. Voting yes means you turn a blind eye to huge cuts in the suicide prevention program. Voting yes means you have no problem knowing that those struggling with addiction will have far less resources available to them. If you aren't okay with this, or any of the other dangerous cuts, you must speak up tonight. Please refuse to approve the budget until full funding is allocated. Don't be complicit in this heartless and cruel plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number nine is Angela Bond Reed, Holland.
Hi, Angela Reed, pediatric nurse practitioner, Holland Charter Township. My issue with the members of the Ottawa impact on this board is that you state your purpose as one to align with the Word of God, yet your actions betray this every single time. Your promises to protect the health of the community through the Department of Public Health budgeting process are as empty as your proclamations to protect the innocence of children and champion the rights of parents. In truth, what your actions demonstrate is discrimination against the poor, the sinful, the non-English-speaking and non-white, non-straight citizens of our county. Your proposed Health Department budget target cuts to benefit these individuals by slashing fifteen to a hundred percent of the budget for minority health grants, health education, vaccine budgets for children with special healthcare needs, food access programs to the needy, family planning, sexually transmitted infections, and communicable disease funds, all while allotting yourselves five million dollars in a line I done with no stated purpose. You see illegal immigrants. I see families making a living through jobs American citizens will not do to provide a better life for their children. You see children damaged by vaccines. I see children who are alive thanks to the eradication of communicable diseases. You see people who are poor and hungry by their own fault. I see people who have been affected by societal structural systems that keep them poor. You see immoral teenagers. I see innocent young adults without the skills, knowledge, self-esteem, or healthy state of mind to wait to have sex until they are in a stable adult relationship because they lack appropriate education and support at home and school. You see faggots and pedophiles. I see human beings capable of committed adult lifetime relationships, and know that straight white males are eleven times more likely to be pedophiles than any creative man in women's clothing. You see people with infections they deserve because of their immoral behavior. I see infections that cause infertility to the same undereducated young adults mentioned above. We see your motives. State them clearly. State your fear of losing the white Christian majority. State your fear of birthing a gay or transgender child. State your disdain for the sinful behavior. State your need to maintain your material wealth. Just please stop pretending you're acting with Christian values. Stop pretending you're protecting the rights of all Ottawa County citizens when you are impeding the rights of those who do not agree with you. Stop pretending you care about the innocence of children. Otherwise, you would have approved Adeline's budget that supports all real risk in our communities. We are one society. What affects one affects all.
Public comment number ten is Tom Nieber, Muskegon.
Hello, my name is Tom Niebor. I live in Muskegon County, and I'm a health inspector for the Ottawa County Department of Public Health. At this point, there isn't much to say that the deaf ears of this board will hear, but there is still much to be said as you defund this county's budget for the Health Department. But that's what you're doing. The cuts you are making to this department are deep and wide and greatly affect our ability to serve the public. You are also using up the Health Department's emergency fund in order to give us a shadow of a budget to work with. So if there are any health emergencies or outbreaks that occur, we will not have the funds to handle them. And the sad part is, that's the point, isn't it? Your words and action have shown that you do not support the health of this county. You have verbally attacked hardworking and valued healthcare workers. You have fired the DEI team and lessened our ability to assist marginalized groups. Your budget cuts have proposed, that you have proposed, have focused on our ability to track disease, vaccinate the public, educate the public, and feed the hungry. And you have used your position to spread anti-vaxxer lies to the public, which you only have the ability to do because you live in a modern world that vaccines created and have eradicated smallpox, polio, and have neutered so many other diseases. You have done all of this while promoting division and hate among your followers, all because we tried to get you to act with a little compassion and empathy during a pandemic that killed over a million Americans. Well, you did it. You have your revenge. Now we all must live with the consequences of your choices. We at the county will do our level best to continue serving this county, but it will be difficult without the resources to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the, members of the audience, please keep their comments to an absolute minimum and respect other speakers, that'd be great.
Number eleven is Penny Garlock, Spring Lake.
Greetings, Board. My name is Penny Garlock. I live in Spring Lake Township. I have lived in Ottawa County for fifty-five years. When I grew up, my mom, a single parent of five, relied on Ottawa County's services for food assistance. I was a troubled teen who ran away from home and ended up seeing a counselor in Ottawa County at your facility. They coached me in returning home with my family, as well as coached my parents on improved parenting skills that kept our family together and prospering. This smooth correction allowed me to prosper and be the first person in my family to graduate from college, to work thirty-three years in Ottawa County, to mentor homeless individuals through the Circles Program in Holland, to become a member of the Herman Miller Giving Board, helping several local organizations throughout, um, serve the essential needs of homeless and needy. I have spent many of my vacations as a respite foster parent, bringing donations to hurricane disaster areas throughout the United States, or traveling to India for months to teach women how to sew who escaped prostitution. Your investment in me enabled me to invest in this community. In return, I'm a contributing member of society that will give back until my last breath. I and you are very blessed to live in a county that is safe, clean, and beautiful. This is not by accident. This does not happen without careful planning and consideration of all the true facts at hand with a clear collaborative approach through mutual understanding and compromise. I'm not seeing this behavior from this board in proposing unprecedented budget cuts and reallocating funds to cause that, that do not help our community be safe. Each one of you likely has relatives and friends that reside in Ottawa County. I believe we all want everyone's experiences to be safe at minimal cost for the long haul. We're not, we're, we are not in this for the short-term gain, but investing in our future for many generations to come. Many of you know individuals who are struggling with abuse, especially during our drug and COVID epidemics. Physical, mental, psychological, drug, or alcohol-related. Some of these people suffering from this type of abuse are in this room right now. As you consider cutting budgets, do you have any idea on who will be directly impacted by your cuts? The decisions could impact you, one of your family members, or friends in the community who do not get the care they need to minimize disruption to the community you appreciate, enjoy, nurture with unforeseen circumstances. When an entity like Ottawa County Health and Human Services does its job, it can seem invisible because small things are addressed before they become big things. Behind the scenes, value is passed to hundreds of humans each month, allowing them to continue to move forward, minimizing downstream impacts and disruption. Early intervention is key. Issues unaddressed can magnify increased sexually transmitted diseases, mental instability, and escalation in substance abuse, which leads to job loss and homelessness.
Thank you.
Number twelve is Ashley Hancock, Grand Haven City.
Hi, I'm Ashley, city of Grand Haven. You love the word discernment, the ability to judge well, but you've never set foot in the clinics you cut. So how can you tell that the people served are in need or the staff are full of heart? It's obvious you knew what you were going to do before the January third start. Prioritizing families, you always say, but you only prioritize those living your way. What about parents that bring teens in for birth control and vaccine? Where is their parental choice? Does their freedom ring? You waste time... You waste time with unactionable resolutions. We need reality and solutions. You cut programs protecting babies that prevent. Do you know congenital syphilis in pregnancy increased by three hundred twenty percent? Pregnant mothers with syphilis at the clinic should know, with attempted cuts, she can find somewhere else to go. Without treatment, there is a forty percent chance her baby will die. So prioritizing that family sounds like a lie. Meanwhile, the veterans' budget hastily, shadily doubled without reason why. You're hurting vulnerable people, hungry kids, teen moms with children already, maybe trying to finish their GED or keep food on the table steady. You can't prioritize families, then cut their food, healthcare, and birth control, then add an unqualified Islamophobic misogynistic assistant to the payroll. We all saw his Twitter posts of hate speech phrases while administration and Joe Moss's business partner's uncle, the lawyer, get huge raises. But there's no conflict of interest and they're just pre-pandemic budgets. We can see through your transparency. It's clear you're holding grudges. Family planning cuts can't meet the grant for Title X. Staff said it would fund Planned Parenthood. You didn't listen to them, but you changed your mind when Right to Life sent you a letter revoking your endorsement unless you could do better. If you accepted invitations to learn what staff do, they have the expertise to think these things through. Do you know some people need STD treatment before an organ transplant? Tell the transplant surgeon to wait because you sent back all the grants. County court-ordered STD testing wouldn't be on time. Assault victims need to know their status as health status as victim of a crime. Colleges need sexual health. There's a twenty percent positive chlamydia rate. If they didn't have condoms, would they stop having sex and wait? That's not evidence-based or true. Like, if people didn't have forks, they would stop eating too? Didn't your Jesus help the poor and sick, prisoners, prostitutes, and sinners? The hypocrisy of your actions shows. You should take a look inward. It must be nice having the privilege of being comfortable with your budget number, though. You're certainly making an impact because of you struggling, have nowhere to go.
Thank you.
Number thirteen is Julie Kuiper, Alleghen County.
My name is Julie and I live in Alleghen County. I have worked for Ottawa County, specifically in the public health department, for over twenty-five years. I had never heard of public health growing up. We never needed to utilize it, and I remember my public health rotation at Kent County to be a real eye-opener that not everyone was brought up in the structure and culture that I was. I am not a local progressive activist, as some like to call all of us that work in public health. In fact, I consider myself a pro-life conservative. But more importantly, I consider myself a follower of Christ, as do many others that I work with. When I started working in public health, I hadn't given it much thought. It was a job in healthcare that wasn't in hospital and that sounded good to me. However, I soon discovered that public health fulfilled me as not just a nurse, but ultimately as a follower of Jesus. The last three years have been rough, not just for you, not just for me, not just for Ottawa County. It's been rough on the entire world. We might be very different from one another, but we are also very similar. In closure, before you make final decisions on the 2024 budget and when you make future decisions, please take a look inside of yourself to decide how you are making this decision. Is it out of anger, bitterness, and retaliation? Or are you making the decision out of a peaceful and loving heart?
Thank you.
Number fourteen is Samuel G. B., Hudsonville.
Hi. So I just, uh, last year, January of last year, became a health inspector. It was actually my dream job. I think I'm the only health inspector who wanted to be one instead of just winding up there. And it was awesome. I got a job where I'm able to help the public. I go to restaurants and make sure that, you know, they're serving safe food and it's really amazing. I love it. And I love the job so much that I was like, well, I want to move to be closer to where I work. And because I love Ottawa County, now that I've started working here. After I moved, I, uh, I started then, uh, interacting more with the community and I've grown even closer than I was before. I truly love living here and I love working for Ottawa County. This, January of this year, though, things started to change. Uh, there was a general feeling of kind of sadness and despair. Uh, and a lot of the people I saw at the health department, people who only wanted to serve the community, were finding that they no longer were able to do the things that they wanted. They were finding that they were being limited, that they couldn't do as much, that they couldn't say as much, that they could never go quite that step to keep the public safe, to really help people out. And it's seen time and again that the reason is that this board is limiting their actions. I really hope that you'll think about your, what you're doing now and hopefully change your decision and give the public its full funding because when you own a restaurant, don't you want to know that they washed their hands before they made you a sandwich? Thank you.
Thank you.
Number fifteen is Wayne Bullen, Allendale.
Good evening. Yeah, it was four years ago we moved to Ottawa County. After living in Novi for forty-one years, we came here to be near our children and grandchildren. We had an opportunity to find a home in Kent County, but chose Ottawa, partly because of the fine reputation for its schools, rising property values, and county services that we mistakenly took for granted. As we know, two county services have been either eliminated, the diversity, equity, and inclusion, or are subject to closure due to unfounded budget cuts to our health department. With the underfunded and possibly forced closure of our health department, our voting citizens, our voting citizens of Ottawa County will be faced with far fewer means of getting help for their mental illness, such as anxiety, depression, suicide, and drug addiction. It has been said multiple times that with the closing of our state hospitals, our county jails now house over fifty percent of our inmates who have mental illness. I ask you commissioners, two things, that you do not cause severe harm to our very important spoke in the wheel of county governments, and that you increase the health department's budget over last year to offset the effects of what all of us are feeling, and that's inflation. As most of us know, a strong, healthy, and respected county with no broken spokes, with the means and desire to help those of us who are less fortunate, will attract businesses and families, giving us the potential to be the number one county in Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number sixteen is Tom Walcott, Georgetown Township.
Good evening. I'm Tom Walcott from Georgetown Township. My wife and I bought a home here in Ottawa County six years ago, and then we moved here last year after I retired from twenty-eight years as a military chaplain, where I served the Navy, the Marine Corps, and the Coast Guard. And I'm glad to see my friend from the Coast Guard City, USA here. Some here talk a lot about liberty and freedom, but what they mean by those words is that they want to be able to do what they want, no matter about its effect on anyone else. So in their quest for what they consider their liberty and freedom, the majority of this commission denies others their liberty and freedom. That is wrong because public service isn't about serving yourself. It's about serving others and our common interests. I could give many examples, telling others what books they can and cannot read, resisting common sense gun regulation that would keep us all safer, ignoring the clear voice of the people of Michigan for easier access to voting, floating accepted best practices in medical care because they don't want anyone telling them what to do, and then hiring un- or underqualified yes-men who will do things the way that they want them done. As a veteran, I speak against attempts to fix something that isn't broken, just to try to make it look like you care about veterans. We veterans are very well-served by the county, the state, and the federal government already. If you want to support veterans, take care of our children, take care of our grandchildren, our neighbors, and our communities by adequately funding public health and food programs. Protect all of us from illness. I know that some here have a beef with the whole idea of public health, and it's okay to have disagreements. But acting out individual vendettas by taking actions that hurt our children and our communities is wrong and it's un-American. And because I know it means a lot to many people in this room, it's also un-Christlike. And it certainly goes against the American principles of liberty and justice, of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness for all people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number seventeen is Kurt Mepplink, Zeeland Township.
Good evening. You guys looking good again today. Kurt Mepplink from Zeeland Township. I just wanted to take some time and thank you for honoring my First Amendment rights and hearing all of us, me especially. I would like to express my support for the new veteran position of Director over the Veterans Affairs of Ottawa County. Commissioner Bonnema asked me to check with some vests to see how they like the system here, and this is what I can report back to the whole board, is that our system is out of date. People can't find it, or they don't know it exists. There's no, there's no one there that understands anything that they need to do for vets. Modern technology is a problem for some of the vets and trying to figure it out is tough, and they're sent home to figure it out on their own, and they can't. I also learned that there's money in the budget for signage from the prior board. Just a simple question. If that's so simple, why isn't it done? Why don't we have signs up there? If they already have the money, they certainly could do that. It's not a big deal. We also have no idea how many vets are in Ottawa County. I feel like this is a pretty sound number and we should be able to come up with that pretty simply. I also want to bring up the fact that the director's job is point zero two percent of a budget, a huge budget. It seems like by fighting over this, we're trying to make a political thing out of helping our vets. When in reality, it's a common sense thing. Think about this once. I hear all the time how all are welcome in Ottawa County. Are our, are we giving our vets the same kind of treatment? Are they welcome here? They feel like they have to go to a different county to get treatment that they need. I guess it means the only ones that are welcome in Ottawa County are the ones that are told they matter. The veteran, with the rate of veteran suicide so high, it's clear that they aren't getting the help they need. The VA system is broken on all levels. That starts at the federal level, the state level, and the county level. I'm just asking you to fix this little, this little piece. I also want to touch base and show support for election integrity as well. We can't afford to look the way we did in the last two elections. Thank you for taking time to make elections more secure with watermark ballots. We need our elections to be correct, and it's simple to understand that in common sense, election integrity makes sense to everybody. And with fourteen seconds to go, Jesus is Lord of Ottawa County.
Thank you.
Number eighteen is P. J. Muir, Robinson Township.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, my name is PJ Muir, Robinson Township, and this is the third time I've had the, uh, the pleasure and the gift of being able to speak to you all on behalf of the veterans. Uh, Commissioner Bonnema did a YouTube video, uh, when he spoke to two of the representatives over there, and I hate to tell you, Commissioner, you've been misinformed by most of that information, uh, that was given to you and the most information that you put out. Uh, the last seventy-two days, seventy-three days, I've talked to a hundred and six vets from the county, uh, whether it be through the VFW, the DAV, video chat groups, and individual, uh, conversations that I have with these guys. Of the hundred and six, eighty-four of them had no idea that the office even existed, and if they did, they didn't know where it was. Sixty-one were told they had to go to the VA and not use the county office. Sixty-seven of them wanted, uh, they want a local PTSD place to meet. Seventy-one of them said it's too far to travel to Grand Rapids and waiting on that vehicle had two no-shows, uh, for the vehicles that supposedly were there to pick them up, and four of them were late for their appointments because of those supposed rides. Fourteen of them do receive, uh, some assistance from the current office. Now, contrary to what you were told, Commissioner, those, those numbers don't match. And I've been working with six veterans myself, uh, who have PTSD as opposed to the county's one, I believe is what they said. What we're lacking, as Mr. Mepplink said prior to me, is we're lacking anything updated. Those guys that work the office, God love them for doing it and I appreciate it. Um, they're veteran brothers of mine and I do love them and I'm glad they're doing it, but they're outdated. They don't have current information. Uh, the things lacking right now is assistance, um, in the following areas. There's no local PTSD group. They have to travel to Grand Rapids, and I said last time that the VA in Grand Rapids, they give you all, uh, clinical psychologists, not veterans that have lived the combat issues. And as a very, very different, you cannot do clinical psychology on combat PTSD. It does not work. I'm here. I know. I've been through the system and I know it's, it just is not effective. So we need something like that locally. They're unfamiliar with the needs of local, younger veterans. Some of these guys getting out that have only spent three, four, five, six years in have very, very different needs than what guys my generation and older do. So they're outdated with that. Um, there's no uh, concept of transitional problems. The biggest problem veterans face these days is a transition from being military to being a civilian again. The military takes you from being a civilian to a soldier, but they have nothing to give you from a soldier to the, back to the civilian. So that starts in the active duty issue, but it also trickles down to local. So if we really love our veterans, we really want to take care of those that are here, we need to help them with the transition. Okay, well, that's all I have. Thank you very much and God bless America.
Thank you.
Number nineteen is Kristi Mepplink, Zeeland Township.
Hello, Kristi Mepplink from Zeeland Township. I've heard that the health department and their supporters are calling the six commissioners draconian for proposing a budget to bring health department dollars back down to pre-COVID levels. What was actually draconian were the health department shutdowns, shuttering of businesses, ridiculous contact tracing, ineffective ma- mask mandates on our children, causing them to fall behind two years behind in school, putting speech pathologists in high demand, and locking free citizens in their home, causing a detrimental mental health crisis. Draconian? Take responsibility, Ottawa County Health Department. Let's get back to living life in a county where freedom rings and taxpayers aren't overburdened. And as far as the press and others perpetuating this health department narrative, which has been very evident here tonight in repeated comments of cuts and closures that aren't actually taking place, please do your job. Honest press reports both sides of the story without prejudice. Do your own research instead of being fed talking points from those whose narrative fits yours, such as the interim health director, certain commissioners, and from people like Dave Barnowski, who calls himself a political activist and stated in a social media post, and I quote, "I usually spend time identifying the press and getting them fed." One side ends up choosing not to speak to the press in spite of many requests because there's no trust in having the facts and unbiased reporting take place. Isn't the purpose of news to provide facts and not one-sided conclusions? We live in a free county covered by constitutional rights that are under attack, and we are disappointed in the games being played on people's emotions through the manipulation of the media by parties that favor a specific narrative. Here are some facts the media won't share in light of the health department budget discussion. The proposed budget is still the second highest budget in the last fifteen years. And at the April Community Mental Health Meeting, it was announced that Ottawa County is the second healthiest county in Michigan. That didn't happen to one, due to one year of excess budget funds that was achieved over time and can be sustained with a proposed budget. So thank you to the commissioners who are doing their best, doing the best thing for taxpayers. So, thank you to the Commissioners who are doing their best, doing the best thing for taxpayers without sacrificing services. We appreciate you. Thank you for your time and service. And one last thing, I would be remiss if I didn't speak in support of honoring our vets and doing everything we can to give them the support they need and deserve as PJ explained. Others have spoken of mental health concerns and suicide related to the Health Department, but the vets are statistically at the greatest risk. I'm thankful for your leadership and that Jesus is Lord over Ottawa County.
Thank you.
Number twenty is Charity McMaster, Spring Lake Village.
It's pretty clear that you aren't actually concerned about fiscal responsibility. You're using those words to make any opposition seem like it's unreasonable. Uh, if you really cared, then you wouldn't have fired an administrator, hired someone who is untested for more money. And then because that new person was having trouble with the workload, you hired an assistant. So this is a second position now that we are paying for. And you also cite increased legal fees. Well, no kidding. With your ongoing lawsuit and your vendetta against the Health Department Director. Drop the lawsuit. Save us a bunch of money right there. You. And there's a lot of childishness happening on that side of the microphone right now. Your commission, under your watch, you are costing us. And now you want to cut immunizations, STD testing and prevention, suicide prevention, substance abuse prevention. We don't believe in vaccines and so no one needs them. You may consider contraception and the thought of having an STD is morally corrupt and so we're cutting funding for those. You aren't listening to the people out here who are upset. You sit through it because you have to, but you're not listening and you don't care. And do you want to know how I know? Because the votes are always split exactly the same. There is not one of you voted in from Ottawa Impact who votes anyway except how Ottawa Impact tells you to. You signed a contract to vote the way you're told. And anyone who deviates from that is cut off, like a Commissioner who was recently censured, censured specifically from the Finance Committee, right before you announced budget cuts. Which essentially means that my county is being run by a private political action committee, not a group of neighbors, not people who vote their own conscience. Not who listen to their constituents and honestly try to represent them equally. Even if the opinions differ, I appreciate the man who was just up here, both of them who talked about Veterans Affairs, they actually talk to the people and they're trying to do good. Your contract is supposed to be with me. With all of us, all of us in this room. You have a very specific Ottawa Impact agenda and you're going to ram it through. Just like how you feel the last Commission did to you. You got mad and you came back with your personal vendetta and these revenge politics and I want you to know. You have become the thing that you hate. Do you see it? I do, and I'm sorry you feel you weren't listened to. I guess you're teaching us a lesson. But there are people whose recourse is tied to Health Department funding and it's not focused on belittling you. You are not that important. You are hurting lives with this budget and you're doing a bad job. Please don't.
Thank you.
Number twenty-one is Judy Bergman, Hudsonville.
Judy Bergman from Hudsonville, Chairman Moss. Your goal found on your social media is to cripple the Health Department's ability to contract trace. To rein in their ability to track communicable diseases and to free Ottawa County from the tyranny of the Health Department. This budget clearly achieves your goal of total control of the Health Department. The control is achieved by using the existing twenty-three fund balance to fund the twenty-four budget. This is normally reserved for unexpected needs. Depleting the fund balance wasn't enough control. You are now requiring that all fund balances designated in twenty-four to an activity has to stay with that activity. Restricting again, the Health Department's ability to be flexible and respond to needs. The twenty-four budget contributes the lowest amount of county general funds for public health operations. Since before nineteen ninety-three. That's right. It's not pre-COVID, it's the lowest in over thirty years. This allows you to micro-control every line item in the Health Department budget. And again, it prevents the Health Department from doing what it needs to do, respond quickly to needs and crises in the community. For clarity, I want to list specifically the cuts that are funded in the twenty-three budget. But are eliminated on Sunday in the twenty-four budget. Forty-eight percent cut for Public Health Administration. Fourteen and a half percent cut for communicable disease prevention. Forty-six percent cut to Children's Special Health Services Vaccine Initiative. Sixteen percent cut to Environmental Health Field Services. Thirty-eight percent cut for Family Planning Services. Fifty-four percent cut in Health Education and Food Programs. Thirty-five percent cut in STI Treatment and Testing. And in addition, you turn down two plus two million dollars in grant money for twenty-four. Mr. Gibbs says the budget reflects the wishes or will of the Board of Commissioners. On his Facebook, he posted this week, "The fight is worth it because of," quote, "knowing that we do thy will," end quote. Joe, your social media posts indicate you two believe you're doing God's will here. You and every Commissioner who votes for this budget will answer to him. Because God cares for the marginalized, the hungry, the sick. And the children of Ottawa County that you are taking services away from. When the Lord. Why you didn't feed the children or the seniors to prevent diseases, what will be your answer?
Number twenty-two is Kristen Hintz, Park Township.
I'm Park Township and I am here to ask that you don't approve the current budget as it is. The cuts that you have made to some of the programs are not serving our county. I specifically want to address the fifty-four percent cut in Health Education and Food Programs. I have been a part of the meetup and greet-up programs and have seen the benefit. Of how that benefits children and families. I've also participated in some Ottawa food programs and I've seen how that not only provides food that builds community. And that is something that is important in Ottawa County and I'm sure all of you can agree how important it is to build community. I also want to speak about the elimination of money that's given just because it says COVID on it. I know that you can do your research. Not all money that has COVID in the title is money that is used for preventing, it can be used for other things. So why would you turn down two million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars in grants because of that? I don't understand. Please read thoroughly, look through everything and make sure. Lastly, in terms of the video, um, Mr. Bonnema, I appreciate you putting together that video. It is great for all veterans. I spoke with veterans as well. My dad happens to be one of them. And he feels that the services that have been provided in Ottawa County are fine and some of the friends that he's had as well. So I agree, the signs would be important to directing. The gentleman number eighteen. Who said that there were so many people not receiving those benefits, he could do his job and help refer the people to, um, our current Veterans Affairs. Um, instead of just complaining. So, uh, have some signs, fantastic, but I don't think that we do need a new director. Please take that in consideration. Lastly, I do want to refer to Lois Masson, number six, and Angela, number nine, to reread those. I think that's important to do. And I'd like to finish with a quote from Angela Reid. She was the number nine speaker who got cut off and she wrote. "Stop pretending you are protecting the rights of all Ottawa County citizens when you are impending the rights of those who may not agree with you or may not be like you." "Stop pretending you care about the innocence of children." Otherwise, you would have, would have approved the original budget developed by the Health Department for vaccines, for food. For many of those different services. And lastly, we are one society and what affects one affects all. And that was by Angela Reid and I just want to finish her quote, so.
Thank you.
Number twenty-three is Josh Baitwerk, Carisburg.
This is an email I sent to you all last week. Josh Baitwerk, Carisburg, Michigan. I am writing to express my concern for the potential impact budget cuts will have on Ottawa food and consequently its impact on our county's network of resources. As a nonprofit leader who has worked with Ottawa food for eight years, I've witnessed. The impact regularly of what the leadership and coordination of this crucial set of programs has been able to accomplish. In the last year of Love and Action, the Christian nonprofit that I lead has benefited in the following ways. This summer, over six thousand, two hundred and fifty-two pounds of fresh produce has been added to Love and Action Pantries through the Farmers Market Program. The Gleaning Program poundage is not yet available, but will likely increase this number. To seventy-five hundred pounds of fresh produce. The fresh produce has been especially important. With calls for food increasing by over twenty-five percent this summer in our ministry. Hundreds of local senior, seniors and local, low, lower income families have been able to access fresh produce at local farmers markets, doubling their funds value. A partnership between Catholic parishes, Love and Action and other nonprofits has provided first night food for those coming temporarily to our county to work in agriculture. LIA has provided food this way to over five hundred and ninety migrant workers who otherwise often enter their work week without access to food for immediate use. Countywide nonprofits have been formed into a network of mutual support, allowing excess food to quickly move to where it is most needed. This has recently resulted in fresh fruit and difficult-to-attain dairy products coming to the north and bananas, bananas and other fruit arriving in the south. Education and training have helped support our food-specific staffing to empower safe and healthy programming. Sharing best practices has dramatically improved programming and especially. Supports smaller organizations whose training budgets and access to information is often limited. Love and Action provides hundreds of thousands of meals to Northwest Ottawa County annually. We network primarily with local churches to provide access points for those in need. Our efforts work to create ways out of food insecurity and poverty, providing a hand up to thousands of households. Ottawa Food has been a key partner and leader in creating networks that help us succeed in our work. We understand financial priorities and the need to make difficult decisions, but we wish you to know. The impact we have witnessed and how it has affected our portion of our county. Your consideration is appreciated.
Thank you.
Number twenty, number twenty-four is Quinn Plight, Gran, Granville.
Hello, my name is Quinn Plight. I've lived in Ottawa County for nearly a year now. And I just wanted to say that I'm really disappointed to see the budget of the Health Department, which goes to immunizations for children. And giving food to the poor go to instead. You know, hiring corrupt and. Frankly, overpriced legal departments and also neo-Nazi secretaries to do people's jobs. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Number twenty-five is Joel Buck, Genison.
Hey Joel Buck, Georgetown Township. Um, okay, gonna ditch this speech because it doesn't make any sense anymore. Um, I'm just gonna offer. The fact that my family and I pray, uh, for every single one of you, every day. Just about every day, I can't. Um, what you guys do, it's unthankful and I've tried to stand up for some of you online when I see some, um. Comments that are being made that are based in misinformation and the amount of hate that comes back and just the evil. Uh, you can't fathom, I, you could say it's beyond processing. You know, just the vulgarity and. There's no, there's no discourse that we can have in our country any longer. It's just, uh, one side pitted against the next and, you know, everybody's against each other. One thing I've seen is this, uh, notion of Christian nationalism and. I go and I say, "Look at the mission statement of Ottawa Impact and say, 'What is Christian nationalism?'" "I'm accused of being a Christian nationalist and I see it's based on Judeo-Christian values." Does that mean that you have to be a Christian to be a part of this country? No, it's morality. You have to have morality. That's what it's based on. John Adams, uh, said, "Our constitution was made only for immoral and religious people." "It is wholly inadequate to the government of any other." And our country is rapidly losing its morality. We can't define marriage, gender, justice, what constitutes responsibility in society. Despite this, I have hope. The forces of cultural and societal engineering are self-destructive. Uh, the ideals that they have will lead to their ultimate destruction. Takes a man and a woman to create life. Aborted babies do not get the chance to repeat the mistakes that their parents made. And those who assign themselves to live in evil will never be happy. The ideology will lead to failure. We have a lot more to be concerned than with pronouns, equity and diversity. Legend has it. That while Rome was on fire and the city destroyed, the Emperor Nero played his violin. Thus revealing his total lack of concern for his people and his empire. I support our Commissioners' proposed budget and doubt, highly doubt that our county will fall while a harmonica plays. Thanks.
Thank you.
Number twenty-six is Kristen Megan Kelly, Jamestown Township.
Okay, first of all, there's a PTSD trigger warning for those who've dealt with sexual assault. I just want to say that for those watching and listening. I do feel a need to do a PSA for community health to let those who are wearing know. If you're wearing a mask or an N ninety-five respirator or a Ken, KN ninety-four or ninety-five fraudulent respirator, you are not getting. Protection through respiratory protection or source control because neither are rated to do so. I've been doing this for twenty-one years, managed respiratory protection for over eighty thousand employees. I think I know what I'm talking about. Furthermore, some of the people have written on the respirators and I want those people to know, you are inhaling alfatic and aromatic, uh, solvents. That keep the ink from drying, so you're inhaling hydrocarbons. Okay. So I wanted to come here and say thank you for not defunding the Public Health Department. It's very important. You didn't defund it, what you did was remit it back to pre-pandemic levels. And also gave it a minor raise, so thank you for doing that. But I wanted to come here and speak to, uh, Commissioner Bonnema's YouTube video, which I actually found very manipulative and passive aggressive. Because as a hundred percent rated disabled veteran, not only am I a veteran, I worked for the VA as a GS twelve for two years. I understand the system and I know how the Fed VA is failing. Part of the failure in the community is those that do not understand that veterans go into the military like a leased car, you're inspected in the beginning and when you leave, you're evaluated. So we are given compensation and pension for our disabilities. I've had people in this community tell me that I am faking my disabilities along with my husband. So you have people that come here and scream mental health and they're hypocrites because they want you to do the bare minimum for veterans. I'm going to share my story with you and I'm going to try my hardest. I pray through this to not lose it. So you cannot see my disability. I have this community and national media mock me because I could not wear a mask. Well, let me tell you what you can't see. I cannot take a number two, I cannot poop without taking medication because I was raped, gang raped. And sodomized and drug behind a dumpster while on active duty by two cops. I have rectal damage, I have nerve damage and you do not see that, but what I can show you is the giant box of Miralax and anal steroids that I am given. So when people accuse me of faking my PTSD, some of the same people that are in this room and have given public comment to mental health. By the way, it is Suicide Awareness Month. We need this Veterans Department because it's broken and I am not going to go talk to two white men. Or a woman who works there, who I have heard from other veterans is very unapproachable and talk about my sexual trauma. And just so you know, as with twenty fifteen, there was more veterans with sexual trauma from, uh, more veterans with PTSD from sexual assault than combat. So I want to make it clear here that I support this Veterans Department so much and you need a veteran to run it. In my process of losing weight, I'm not getting health advice from people that have always been skinny. I'm getting my advice from people who've been there and made it to where they should be. So thank you so much for what you're doing and upholding.
Thank you.
Number twenty-seven. Number twenty-seven is Rachel Athwood, Georgetown Township.
Good evening. I'm here to thank you for doing exactly what your voters asked you to do. I know you're being accused of all voting together and colluding, but maybe it's because y'all share the same values. and you represent the same constituents that want the same things. I work for government, for the House of Representatives, and one of the things that I observe is excessive government spending. And what I have learned is government agencies will eat whatever you feed it. It is time to bring back our health department to appropriate levels without damaging and completely cutting out programs, but funds need to be cut. We need to be fiscally responsible. I've also heard mention of how important childhood vaccines are. I'm also the West Michigan Director of Outreach for Michigan for Vaccine Choice. We are not anti-vaxers, we are ex-vaxers because we used to vaccinate our kids until our kids were harmed. And that is why we do not do it anymore. I'd like to point out that every vaccine on the childhood schedule is never done safety testing with a double-blind placebo. When they do safety testing on the carrier fluid of a vaccine, they test against another vaccine. And then when there's the same number of health conditions and adverse reactions and the numbers are equal, they declare it safe and effective. All seventy-six vaccines that are on the childhood schedule, that's right, seventy-six, and that was before adding the COVID shots, are all protected against harm to the big pharma companies, meaning the Childhood Act of nineteen eighty-six prevents parents like me from being able to sue the manufacturers. We should not be funding or promoting these products with our government for our children. So I would support defunding vaccines for children completely. And if people would like to go to their doctor and get one, they can and the health department can stay out of it. My son is vaccine injured and I recently shared that on the vax injury bus with an interview for their third movie. And his injury is a direct result of the Ottawa County Health Department coercing me against my deeply held religious beliefs to vaccinate my son while they were withholding his access to special ed schooling. And that is why I'm here today to support reducing the health department funding to reasonable levels. I do support many of the other things our health department does, but I would like to point out that vaccines hold no place in public health until they are held accountable for the damage that they do and go through appropriate double-blind placebo safety studies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number twenty-eight is Marsha Manning, Port Sheldon Township.
My name is Marsha Manning and I live in Port Sheldon Township. I've only lived in Ottawa County for two and a half years. Uh, Oak, Oakland County in Southeast Michigan, where I moved from, was run by commissioners of both parties who believed in good governance. I understand that prior to twenty twenty-three, the Ottawa County Commission was then dominated by commissioners who also believed in good governance. I have been shocked as I have read about and observed the poor governance, cronyism, and revenge politics that I have been occurring throughout twenty twenty-three here in Ottawa County, perpetrated by the Ottawa Impact Majority on this board. As I understand it, the impetus for the creation of Ottawa Impact revolved around the objections, students wearing masks in schools during a global pandemic. As you can see, I believe in masking, so I don't really understand this concept of people feeling that they are having their rights infringed upon by addressing a public health crisis. I understand that a large group came to this very location to protest the masking order and that Mr. Moss and others were incensed because the board would not bend to their will, even though the Board of Commissioners at that time explained to those wanting the public health order lifted that they did not have the legal authority to do so. In that case, the courts agreed with the commissioners because when Ottawa Impact sued the county over the masking directive, the court sided with the county. And here we are. A large group of taxpayers are here to tell this board that we believe in public health and want the commissioners to pass adequate funding so vital programs are not cut. However, discussions on this board today would indicate that this board will cut, will vote for these cuts anyway as a way to get revenge on the health department for a public health order they did not agree with. There are no legal issues that would bar the board from fully funding the health department. And there is no financial imperative at this time that would require these cuts that will impact the health department and no other county departments. There does not seem to be any indication that Ottawa, the Ottawa Impact Majority cares that this, this community does not want these cuts. And it does not matter to the OI majority that the citizens of this county will be hurt when programs are no longer available that support their mental, emotional, and physical health. We may not have recourse for this decision in the courts, but we will have recourse in the polls next year. And I hope to see everyone at the polls in twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
Number twenty-nine is Melanie Skolton, Park Township.
Hi, Melanie Skolton, Park Township. I have to say that the public comments tonight are, are just on fire. They are amazing and I really can't say much more than what has already been said. So my only comment tonight is to underline all of them and to ask you to fully fund the public health department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number thirty is A.C. Vanderkolk, Park Township.
Hi, everyone. My name is A.C. Vanderkolk. I live in Park Township and I'm here tonight to request full funding for the Ottawa County Department of Public Health and the Momentum Center. I just want to add that I've been blessed to be part of a program at the Methodist Church in Holland. Once a week, it allows unhoused people to shower and get clean clothes. They can get their bicycles fixed. A meal is provided by church volunteers. And you know, before I started participating, I assumed that these people that participated there were all disabled by mental health issues or had drug or alcohol problems. I was deeply wrong and here's the, the surprise. Uh, most of them work part-time or even full-time. Uh, and they're unhoused because as we all know, real estate pricing has put housing out of reach for many, many people in Ottawa County. Uh, in addition to being unhoused, many live without medical insurance. So for them, public health for them is indispensable. It's just, it's just healthcare for them. Um, why should you care about that? Because you, you're all common sense people. The word public in the phrase public health is really important. It's there because disease does not discriminate. If the person I work with gets sick, I'm at risk. The whole team is at risk. Now the business is at risk, the investors are at risk. Everybody is at risk and everybody is impacted. So I'd, I'd ask that when you think about public health, think about this old proverb. I really like this poem. For one of a nail, the shoe was lost. For one of a shoe, the horse was lost. For one of a horse, the rider was lost. For want of a rider, the message was lost. For one of a message, the battle was lost. For one of a battle, the kingdom was lost, all for the want of a nail. We need to take care of each other. We need to take care of the weakest among us. This is what, this is what a public health department does. Reconsider your attitudes and mindsets, fund the health department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number thirty-one is Bonnie Tardif, Park Township.
Hello again, board. I thought I was at an Ottawa Impact meeting, but this is open and a secret. I talked last session, you may remember me. I didn't give my real name then because I don't trust you. You may recall my story about being raped and my sisters and I repeatedly between the age of six to eleven. But I wonder if you asked yourself, why didn't they just tell somebody? Understandably, it's a natural question. There are three answers to this. One reason is the big one. It is because my dad, a Christian reformed deacon in our church, told us that if we told anyone, he would shoot us and my whole family with a gun because that's what ninety-two point seven men in jails do. Shoot and kill Americans. That he had, and that he also said that he had money put away and would leave the country and no one would find him. The second reason is because we had no one to tell. Granted, we were little, but by the time I was old enough to tell my mom, she wouldn't believe me. And third, because we were told that what goes on in our house remains in our house, secrecy, above all else, secrecy. Similarly, in Ottawa Impact membership. Every night since then, I asked the Lord, why did he allow this? I believe because he wanted me here at this time to remind you of what you already know. The marginalized like me then have no one to go to for help. The only people that can give them justice and help in Ottawa County is Adeline Hamley and her staff. She is the voice for those who don't have one. Please drop your lawsuit against her. Stop wasting what could be up to three million dollars that you are funneling to Coleman and Associates. Put the two, two hundred and forty-three K towards helping the DEI do good, do their good works. The veterans possibly could use it, but they are building a two million dollar showcase facility at Park Township Airport in Ottawa County with their own funds. If there is a need, why isn't two of that two-point million being put towards helping them and not building a building? The marginalized are not born. Oh, one last thing, my pedophile father, he was also a World War II vet. A hard no for that.
Thank you.
Number thirty-two is Bridget Fox, Grand Haven Township.
Hello, my name is Bridget Fox and I live in Grand Haven Township. I have heard some overwhelming testimony today and I am just going to keep this succinct and say, Ottawa citizens deserve a quality and functional health department. By cutting funds, it's not going to make it. Please, I implore you to know on this budget until full funding can be appropriated. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Number thirty-three is Monique Hanson, Spring Lake Village.
Good evening, Commissioners. I urge you to reconsider the proposed budget cuts to our health department's requested budget. As a parent and concerned member of this community, I believe it's essential that we prioritize the well-being and safety of our children. The decision to decrease the health department's requested budget and remove all COVID-related grants is short-sighted. Ms. Hamley has stated that many of the grants with the word COVID in them are not limited to COVID purposes and can be used to trace other communicable diseases. My children's school ranks among the top.